Public for Richard Steens. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Okay, good evening and welcome to the October 3rd, 2022 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Before we begin, could we please have a moment of silence for all the people being affected by COVID, fires, the hurricane, and other disasters? We will have public service announcements first, then we have a public hearing about application of Cracker Barrel Old Country Store, Inc., doing business as Cracker Barrel for change of license category to all alcohol beverages at the premises currently located at 215 Charlton Road. Town administrators update, department reports, police department, facilities, actions, action items, consideration and possible action on accepting a donation from the Hillis Foundation of Hudson, Mass. in the amount of $20,000 to the Sturbridge Police Department for the purchase of a Comfort K9 and supplement training costs. Consideration and possible action to have the board authorize the chair to execute a propane contract for the fiscal year with Tassies Fuel for the fixed price of $1.91.25 per gallon. Consideration and possible action to have the board authorize the chair to sign the application when completed for the Green Communities Competitive Grant application. Consideration and possible action to have the board authorize the chair to execute a contract with American Alarm for a contract term of three years, ending June 30th, 2025. Consideration and possible action to have the board authorize the chair to execute the contract amendment with SSV Architects for the Joshua High Library HVAC project. Consideration and possible action to have the board authorize the town administrator and facilities to audit oil from the American Discount Oil at 10 cents off per gallon for town-owned buildings for the fiscal year 2023. Consideration and possible action on appointing Ron DeSantis as temporary building inspector. Consideration and possible action on a special one-day liquor license for Brimfield Winery for the Sturbridge Bonfire located at Sturbridge Common on October 22nd from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. Consideration and possible action on a special one-day liquor license for Greater Good Imperial Brewing for the Sturbridge Bonfire located at Sturbridge Common on October 22nd from 4:45 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Consideration and possible action on the proclamation to the Rotary Club of, should be Stowbridge. That's okay. Consideration and possible action on the new contract and fee for weights and measures service with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. All business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum, and then we will adjourn. Okay, our clerk is not here to read the public notice. Do you have it, Chase?
Yep.
Oh, wait a minute, I forgot. Public service. Ian?
I have none.
Chase?
I have none. None.
No, I have this from the chief, which, thank you, I had already written it down, too. Trick or treat is from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Sunday, October 31st, should be 2022. Unless we missed it. The Sturbridge Fire Department will hold their annual Harbors Parade following trick or treat. The parade starts behind Town Hall at 7:00 p.m. That will be followed by a costume contest with prizes, hot chocolate, and cookies for all. The Lions Club is cosponsoring the event with the Sturbridge Firefighters Association.
All right, Town of Sturbridge, public hearing notice. Notification is hereby given that an application has been filed by Cracker Barrel Old Country Store, DBA Cracker Barrel for a change of license category to all alcohol beverages at the premises currently located at 215 Charlton Road, Sturbridge, Mass., 01566. With the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen in accordance with MGL CH 138, a public hearing will be held on Monday, October 3rd, 2022, at 6:35 p.m. This hearing will be held at Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass., 01566, September 22nd, 2022.
Okay, thank you, Chase. Do we have representatives? Good evening. Could you please give us your name?
My name is Gregory Demakis. I'm an attorney in Lynn, and I'm representing the applicant. And to my right is Cory Rose Scully. She's the manager of the Cracker Barrel. And before I begin, let me tell you a little about my brilliance. I brought my briefcase, but I didn't put the file in my briefcase. So I owe you green cards, and I'll overnight those to you tomorrow so you'll have them. My paralegal put them right on my desk, and she said, "Don't forget the file." And I've got the green cards on top. And I do have my briefcase, I just didn't put anything in it.
Makes it light. Did, how many green cards did you get back?
I didn't even look. She said, "Here they are." I think we got everything back.
Yeah.
Okay. So my colleague, John Maradian, was here a few months ago for an application for wine and malt license, restaurant license, which was granted. And for three months, a little over three months, Cracker Barrel's been selling beer and wine. Right around the time that we got this license, the company, company-wide, made a new policy that they'd like to sell all, in all of their restaurants, full liquor. And so we are applying, and the other Cracker Barrels of Massachusetts for that as well. And so here we are back again, asking for an upgrade of the wine and malt. Everything else remains the same. The ownership remains the same. Cory Rose has been at the store for nine years. She's experienced operator. They are very strict on their sales. They've been doing a wonderful job so far for the three months. And so we would like, if the town agrees to it, would like to upgrade it to a full alcoholic restaurant license under 138, Section 12.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments from the board? Ian?
I have nothing. Other than curiosity that how it's been received with the customers. I mean, I know Cracker Barrel was, for a long time, like the lone wolf of not serving.
Yeah, I have yet to deal with a guest complaining about having alcohol available. I think it's partly because we still have that family atmosphere, the peg games on the table, the lamps, like, everything's the same, except now we just have different options.
Yep. Good.
Chase?
I have nothing. I mean, the only thing that I'm going to say is, just, obviously, I'm going to approve it and I'm for it, but you're just going to be super careful where your location is in the intersection at 20 with people pulling out there.
Yes.
You know, it's just a tough location as far as traffic-wise, so.
Jamie?
I have nothing.
And I have no questions. I see you have all the days and the hours listed. Okay.
Speaking of which, on the hours, I think we have to come back for one more application. We do like Sturbridge, so we like coming back here. But on Sunday, the hours are currently 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and the state allows us to be open from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Does the town have a different, does the town have an ordinance that restricts Sunday openings to 11:00 a.m.? Do you know?
Actually, we had gone by the state when they came out with their new time slots. Yankee Spirits came to us, and then another one, and we changed it to coincide with what the state is.
Okay, our license, I think you said reads 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., so.
For Sunday only.
So we will file a separate application to do that? Okay.
Okay, anything else? Public? We have quiet public. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, is there a motion?
I will move to approve the application that's been filed by Cracker Barrel Old Country Store Incorporated, doing business as Cracker Barrel, for a change of license category to all alcoholic beverages at the premise currently located at 215 Charlton Road, Sturbridge, Mass., 01566.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I'll overnight.
What a lovely place. Love Cracker Barrel.
I haven't really seen a food place. I've come across, and been like, "I love that place."
No, actually, after I interviewed my husband, I went, and I'm like, "I want to work in this town, they have Cracker Barrel." And he's like, "Yeah, this is so cool."
Well, it's an oddity in New England.
It is an oddity. And we love it. There's not a place robbing you.
No, that's a good town. It's just that every food place I like.
Okay.
It's a good town for me to be in.
Okay, next town administrators update?
No, I'm good, thank you. I've talked enough about food and.
Okay, department reports. Police chief, good evening.
Good evening. I'll start with a July and August report to do. Start with the calls for service. July, we're up 625 calls for the month per, compared to last year at this time. Mutual aid calls, we're up to 105 times this year that we've called for outside agencies to come help us, compared to three times that we've gone out of town to help other people. So this month was eight, this, July was eight times that we went out, that we had other towns come in, or state police come in, and we went out of town three times to help Southbridge. The Federated Church donated some comfort beers that we put into our cruisers, so if we go to any domestic calls, or anything involving children, or anything like that, we are able to hand those out. So a big thank you to the Federated Church for that, as far as, this is under operations. Officer Gino Dono and Hoffman and members of the fire department went over to the senior center and had a CPR course for the seniors over there. We had a truck, a touch a truck event that we participated down on a common, very successful. Driver's ed class, who was taught at Tantascra by one of our officers. And we did 22 boat patrols. Not 22 boat patrols, conducted 22 inspections. Training, nothing of significance to report there. I think for July, that's, for July, that's all I have. Any questions on that?
Chief, I just, there's quite a disparity between the sick time.
Yes.
July and August.
There is. And we had a baby, not we.
Congratulations.
So there was a baby.
It takes a village.
So there was a baby. That was born in some, time was used for that.
Oh.
So that's where the discrepancy or the significant.
Forty-six, and then the other one is eight or nine, I think.
Yes, yeah. I was looking at that, and I said, "Okay." And I had to recall what it was for, so. I had a feeling I'd be asked about it.
Now, the boat patrols, have there been many citations, or?
No, generally, it's very rare that we see any citations given out. Somebody's got to really be doing something significantly to harm others that we're going to issue citations. Our main focus while we're out there is to make sure everybody's got their life jackets on, make sure they have the proper safety equipment, and have a visible presence out there. So if they're, if we don't really write citations, because generally when we're underwater, people are either, they'll scoot back to their docks, or they'll behave themselves very well.
Times don't change.
It's kind of funny, as soon as the boat goes out, the officers will say, "Yep, the lake's full of water, and I'm full of boats," and everybody's gone.
Nice to be on the police boat, you get the lake all by yourself, you know?
Okay, anyone have a question on July?
All right. So August, we're up 403 calls compared to this time last year. And, you know, the citations are up. We had nine mutual aid calls requesting outside help, 114 as of August, compared to two times in August, we went out of town, we helped haul in Brimfield twice. So so far, as of August, 114 times we're calling for other agencies to help us because we're not available. Operations-wise, we had National Night Out, which was a successful event, again. A lot of planning from Lieutenant Bateman and Dispatcher Boito put a lot of time and effort into this. It's, even though it's one night, it takes months of planning, and they did a fabulous job, so my hat's off to them, they did a fantastic job. We had the Pan Mass Challenge, which was very successful, no issues. That's another event, starts about five to six months prior to the event, we start planning the security for that event. I'm not going into details in the public with it, but I will say, we've had agencies from Quincy, Mass., for example, sends out their bomb dogs every year for at least the last 10 years. They come all the way from Quincy Friday night and Saturday morning, do certain things with their dogs that we don't have the capability of. But the Massachusetts State Police send specialty units to assist us with this. But this year, Lieutenant Bateman took over the reins for the operations and the planning of this, his first year as operations lieutenant. So he did all the coordination, and he did a great job with this. So I was actually going to reach out to Robin and say, "I think we, I would like to see," I historically send a thank you letter to, you know, Massachusetts State Police or Quincy, but I think maybe coming from the town might be a nice thing, that they send their assets out and they don't charge us anything, maybe a thank you letter to these agencies.
And the Pan, when the Pan Mass was in here, they had nothing but good things to say about you guys and how much you help, and so.
Yeah, sure.
Great, thanks.
Just give me the details, chief.
Yep. We had our annual salt cookout, seniors in law enforcement working together in August. That was another successful event. We served hamburgers, hot dogs, hot dogs, rather, with the seniors and the fire department assisted with that. That's a great annual event that we get together every year and do. I wrote a scholarship a few months back to Roger Williams University for Lieutenant Lombardi to, I was hoping that he would get the Johns D. Coyle Scholarship to attend the Command Training Series Executive Development Course. It's normally about a $2,000 course, and I did get the, he did get the scholarship. So we're going to be sending Lieutenant Lombardi to this Command Series, which is saving the town about $2,000, because we took the time to write this scholarship. And it's a great school, I went to it, so I'm going to be glad to see Lieutenant Lombardi attend that and graduate from that school.
Okay, on that letter, though, they have their date wrong in the bold print, where it says it's Stanton.
Twenty-one.
It says October 12th to the 14th, 2021.
Yes. Actually, it might be, it's 12th, 13th, 14th, then it's a second date of November 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th. It's a two-week school, or?
Yeah, but the year's wrong.
The year hasn't won at the end. The year's 20,000 on this, actually. 20,022, 221.
Something with the dates today, I don't know what it is.
That's okay.
But it's 20, it's this year, it wasn't last year, so this is.
Spread out.
Yes, you're right.
That's good, he got it.
Yeah, it's going to be a great school for him.
Maybe it'll change his football affiliation.
So, let's see, we did six, six child seat safety checkpoints and installed six child safety seats through the month of August. Twenty inspections, boat inspections for that month. Let's see. Nothing than that? That's all I got for.
You had the bus patrol as well, start school.
We did do, that's, that's going to be in September's, September's review, but we did Operation Yellow Blitz, I did a post on that. We had over 600 shares on the Facebook, social media. There was an article that came out yesterday, Sunday, in the Telegram Gazette about it. Telegram went out and did a ride-along with our people, we're one of the few communities, I guess, around that. We don't just do it for the first week or first two weeks. Our school resource officers throughout the school year will grab a bus before school or after school, and follow the bus throughout the school year. So there's always some type of following going on, hoping that, you know, we can continue to educate the public and make sure the motors are stopping for the red lights. So we got that word out pretty good, and we've been doing that for 15 years that I've been here, so it's nothing new. But we, we continue with that tradition.
Right, it was, it was a good article.
Yeah, it was, I liked that, yeah. And then another thing that's starting tomorrow is, the clinician that we applied for the grant for quite a while ago, has just finished up training through Riverside Community, and they, she is going to come to the police department tomorrow and starts her orientation on our end. So that's going to, that's a huge thing for us. We're one of a few communities that I know of in this area that have their own clinician assigned to them. And it's all 100% paid for by the Department of Public Health at this time, so that's great.
Okay, anyone have questions or comments on August? Chief, before you leave, we do have the donation of 20,000 from the Hillis Family Foundation. Do you want, just want to say a few words about that?
Yeah, very thankful for the opportunity to receive that. It's a one-time donation that they're giving. There's a lot of legwork, there was an application process for this. Officer Kobe Titula and Officer Rono Boczewski both participated in getting this, these funds for this Comfort Dog that we're going to have. The school and the training combined comes up to close to $20,000 if we select the first school that we've looked at. I'm looking at other schools and other dogs right now to see if there's the ability to have a dog donated and, or come to us already trained to try to save time, save money, and use that donation towards food, bills, whatever else we have to use it for. But if not, right now, we have enough money to start this program, get it up, and get it going. So I'm very thankful of that. I'm thankful for the two officers who put the time and effort. Officer Titula's going to be the handler, he's the Burgess Elementary School Resource Officer, and I'm looking forward to it. I think that's going to be a huge success throughout town, the town, not only for just the residents, but people going through mental health crisis, students that need, it's been proven successful throughout the Commonwealth, so I'm glad we're on it. Very thankful for Hillis Foundation. Generally, they, they are a substance abuse family that donate to people of, that have substance abuse issues. And this canine, we can use in areas where there is substance abuse. If somebody's having some type of crisis because of their substance abuses, we can deploy the dog at that location as well. So very, very, I've sent them off a letter already, as soon as I got the donation, and I'm hoping to, I've talked to Robin about setting up a donation account so we can continue to receive donations and fund the program, hopefully, out of donations. People tend to be very generous when it comes to programs like this.
And we might, when, once you all approve it officially, to accept it, bring them in, or invite them in to present officially?
Yeah, we were thinking that maybe after the dog is trained and not jumping and bouncing around, that we could have, we can have the dog come in, fully trained with the handler, and maybe the members of the Hillis family come in and do some type of presentation, so.
Any excuse for me to have a dog in Town Hall?
I think I'll be absent. Just kidding. Okay, does somebody want to make a motion, then, to accept the donation and place it into an account? Special account?
I'll make a motion to accept the donation on behalf of the Hillis Family Foundation and place it into an account.
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, thank you, chief.
I was hoping Selectman Chase Kabinsky would match that.
Yeah. When you get a cat, I'll pitch in for the cat.
He's in $2,500 bucks on a cat.
I'll donate to that one. Okay, Jake here, chief. Okay, next we have our facilities department. Good evening, Robin.
We can get cats instead of pest control.
Yeah, that actually is true.
Hi, how's everybody tonight?
Good.
So I don't have too much for the facilities update. It's been a pretty busy year, but try to keep it short and sweet. We did some additional operating repairs before the end of the last fiscal year because we were lucky enough to have such, locked in such a low oil price last year, and then some other things that were planned. So we did some dormer repairs around the windows in the back of the safety complex, and exterior painting at Town Hall. I'm going to be monitoring the cracks and things that were in the columns out front to see how long it takes before they come back. So that was sort of a double-duty effort. And we had two emergency repairs to make this year, both in the library. One was the hydraulic elevator had to be repacked, and the emergency heating repair, which we also had again today. So we'll talk about that project later in the agenda. Maya, we received a grant in November of '21 that paid for facilities management software. It's now up and running, and it also did some capital forecasting and capital assessments for us, so we have a lot of data and the communication going into this next fiscal year planning, so I'm excited for that. We also have an open six-hour part-time custodian position, it's posted on the website, that's dedicated to the senior center for six hours a week, so it's constant, sort of rotating door on that small position, but it is open and posted. And then other items of note were just some capital projects that we completed for the year. One of them was lift operators for the DPW garage doors. This is the first time they've ever had remotes in the trucks, so they were really happy for that. Yeah, the little things, right?
Saves a lot of heat, too.
Saves a lot of heat, saves a lot of time getting in and out of the trucks.
And risk of back injuries, to be honest with you. You know, work-as-com stuff.
Yep, all kinds of things. The CPA funded the library window restoration for the 10 archtop windows on the original portion of the building, so that was completed. The apparatus flooring garage, garage flooring, which was an epoxy coating, was completed in the public safety complex. That was a couple of years coming, but it's finally been complete. And the North Cemetery Building Rehabilitation Project was for the shell work, the roof siding painting. There's a little bit more work to do out there for the guys in the next coming year or two for DPW on the inside, to be able to use it a little bit more appropriately, but it's all buttoned up at this point, so that was a good project to complete.
Right, looks good on the outside.
Yeah, yeah. So those were just a couple of items I wanted to highlight for you. If you have any questions?
Any questions on the report? Okay, good report, thank you. So I imagine you're going to sit with us for a while.
Yes, yeah, well, I.
Okay. Okay, we have the contract for the fuel.
Yes, so we bid through CMRPC this year, and we did not have any luck of being selected for propane. So we went back out on our own and had two bidders respond, Pioneer Valley Propane, who we had last year, and Tassies Fuel responded. So Tassies is a low bid at $1.91.25 per gallon, including the taxes and the fees for the propane. So we are recommending a contract for the fiscal year 2022. So we are recommending a contract for the fiscal year '23 with Tassie's.
Any question on that? Hey, someone want to make a motion then?
Sure. I move to authorize the chair to execute a propane contract for the fiscal year with Tassie's Fuel for the fixed price of $1.9125 per gallon.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? The next one is consideration and possible action to have the board authorize the chair to sign the application when completed for the Green Communities Competitive Grant Application.
If I could just, I'd like to thank Robin for taking this over this year. When I came in, I mean, one of the things I'm sort of in the process of doing is looking at who's been assigned what, and with so much turnover with town administrators, people had stepped up and taken things on that wouldn't normally be assigned to them and things that should be assigned to people weren't. And so we're doing a lot of that, sort of relooking. And one of the things that I looked at was that Jean had the Green Communities, but much of the sustainability for energy falls onto facilities. And so I asked Robin if she would be willing to step up, take that from Jean, and move into working on that application and monitoring those grants, because she was involved in a lot of the information gathering anyway for Jean. And so Robin agreed to take that over and move in. So this is her first year going through this, and I want to thank her for her efforts on this.
Thank you. Question? Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
Nice to her, because it's her first year.
And we do have a.
Yeah, I.
Michelle gave us a new sheet. Did you get that?
So I provided an update with the specific projects and the costs on there, so.
For a motion? So I'll make a motion to accept that the board authorized the chair to sign the application when completed for the Green Communities Competitive Grant Application for 2022.
Okay, and then it has, the amount would not?
To exceed $200,000.
Seconded.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, then alarm contract.
So last year, we tried to centralize our security system vendors, because we have a couple of vendors across town, and one of them is becoming increasingly difficult. So unfortunately, we weren't able to do it last year. The feedback that we received was that the systems needed to be upgraded in conjunction with that, just based on the age of most of our systems. So this year, we planned for that in the operating budgets of the buildings, and we bid. It was a couple-month process. It's been very challenging to get any bidder response, even a no thank you, we're not gonna bid, has been just very difficult. I reached out to, you know, more than a handful of vendors under the state contract list, which is where we were pulling this from, and just nobody wants to bid, nobody wanted to respond. We had two, and then as I was prepping for the meeting, one dropped out. So we are down to the one vendor of American Alarm. But they have worked with us to provide us with the monthly cost, the percent annual increase over the three-year term, and estimated one-time upgrade cost for the five facilities included in the contract, which is center office building, library, town hall, the recycling center, and the highway department.
Any questions from the board?
What was the total, what was the total cost?
If you.
Otherwise, I just.
Yeah, so the total cost of the one-time estimated upgrade?
Oh, just the whole thing as a whole.
The one-time estimated upgrade cost is a total of $13,457.35. And then the monthly cost is basically $540 a year or $45 a month, with the exception of the library. A little bit more.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone want to make a motion?
Sure, I will move to authorize the chair to execute a contract with American Alarm for a term of three years, ending on June 30th of 2025.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Too many papers. Okay, next we have discussion and action on the contract amendment with SSV Architects for the Joshua Hyde Library HVAC project.
Yes, so earlier this year, the board authorized the contract for design development after committee selected the design team. They have been working diligently using that initial appropriation of ARPA funds, and we are ready for the next stage since the project was funded at town meeting. So this is the contract amendment for the design team through construction administration.
Can anyone have a question on the contract at all?
Why don't we lump all these costs in to the town meeting vote, so it's like all-encompassing? Or can we just not see these things coming? And not just this specifically, it seems like with everything, we approve a dollar amount for a project, and then there's like extra architectural stuff, extra engineering, it just adds into the overall cost. I'm asking more for myself than.
Yeah, but you don't know what comes on down the line.
Right.
I think a lot of communities right now are running into, costs skyrocketed so quickly that what was asked for in a town meeting in '20?
That I get, but it's more like these planning things always seem to come up, and it just, and I think a lot of people, you get people who are like, well, why aren't we always approving more money for this? And it just.
And you're better off trying to ask for what you think you need right up front.
Exactly.
And people are uncomfortable when you keep coming back for more. And like I said, lately, it's been more of an issue for communities, that things came in so much higher than anybody anticipated. But I do think you're right, we need to take a look when these projects come forward. Everybody wants to make it sound good.
I think in the grand scheme of things, a million-dollar project or whatever it's gonna end up being, this is, it's pretty much chunk change, but.
Yeah, but it's still for transparency purposes, people wanna see it.
Still money.
Exactly, yeah.
Absolutely. So this is included in that $1 million that we took to town meeting.
Okay.
This is in that budget. So that's what we're using it for.
All right, we just have to approve it. That's why I was asking, I didn't want to.
Yeah, so each time, so each time I have to come back when I have a contract amendment, unless we.
I know you're always pretty well-planned out, too.
Right, unless you delegate the opportunity, or, you know, I'm not sure where Robin stands on things like change orders or amendments to stuff that exists. So for formality, I come back for every act, even though it's within the budget.
It's better to come back to the board and the public.
Yeah, yeah.
But to your point, there have been a few already since I've been here, that even that town meeting, there were a couple of things, there were extensions and additions, and I think we do want to avoid those.
And in this particular case, we are also putting this in the Green Communities grant that we previously authorized. So it was actually, the state was heard about that we were doing the project as we were working on the Green Communities, and they were really excited about this project in particular, because we're removing the propane and we're gonna decarbonize the building. So.
She was very, very supportive of us putting this through as a Green Communities.
Yep, it helped our numbers a lot. It made the, all of the projects more worthwhile for the Green Communities application. So just out of the gate, we're gonna, the project as designed right now going into this next phase is gonna receive a $75,000 utility rebate from National Grid based on the appliances that we selected for the bill, for the project, but also an additional $49,000 from the Green Communities. So all of that will come off of the bill, as far as, that's my ultimate goal, just to keep reducing that down.
You've looked at everything for this project. I know it's been a long, long process, but I just, it seems a lot of times it's like it's very choppy with how we. It's just hard, it's hard, yeah, they're hard.
And the bigger the project, the choppy it gets. Okay, somebody want to make a motion then?
Sure, I will move for the, to authorize the chair to execute the contract amendment with SSV Architects for the Joshua Hyde Library HVAC project.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, the consideration and possible action to have the board authorize town administrator facilities to order oil from American Discount Oil at 10 cents off per gallon for town-owned buildings.
So this has been an interesting process. Nobody wants to sell oil, lock into anything. The ones on the state list don't want to come to Sturbridge for whatever, I guess, location and delivery, the cost of even getting it out here. So then we sort of went back to the drawing board, and Robin started just calling some locals. So he made every effort to go through the procurement, go off the state bid list, and had absolutely no luck. Robin and I had a long talk about, do we lock in if we can? Most of them don't want to right now. It's swung down dramatically in the last few weeks. It may go down for the next couple of weeks. It may go up again after November, I mean, or January if new people get in, in Washington. I mean, it is so volatile right now.
The next hurricane banks left.
The next hurricane could skyrocket it tomorrow. So, I mean, I think, you know, we did the best we could with this, and we figured if we could get 10 cents off per gallon and get someone to actually bring us oil, that would be important, so.
I think I get 10 cents off for paying within 10 days or so. It's not even, it's like, not even a big deal, it's crazy, it's just.
It's free if you don't pay.
Try it, Jerry.
Come take it back, don't worry.
Try it. Okay, is there a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion to have the board authorize the town administrator facilities to order oil from American Discount Oil at 10 cents off per gallon for town-owned buildings for fiscal year 2023.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Thanks, Robin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin, have a good night.
You, too.
It's not quite doc, doc. Getting there. Next item is consideration and possible action on appointing Ron DeSantis as temporary building inspector.
It's actually Rob, we can't get guys that.
He's Ron.
We can't kick guys that.
He's actually Ron.
Oh, is it?
It's actually a typo, he is, it is Ron DeSantis, yes. We are hiring Ron DeSantis to PR.
Think he gets any weird phone calls?
Our on-call inspector, yeah, I just thought that was hysterical. So yes, Nelson is going away on vacation. We can't really rely on mutual aid. We normally go back and forth with Southbridge, but I don't believe they've hired a new inspector yet, so we've been actually sort of available to help them out. But with Nelson going away, if we have an emergency situation, we need to be able to call someone in. Mr. DeSantis has a resume certainly that shows he's qualified to come in. I believe he works at an hourly rate of $50 an hour on a call, which is not outrageous for him to come in and do that. He would obviously need to use a town truck if he had to come in. That's the only thing he requested, because of his personal insurance not covering his truck to go out and do it. So we would be covered under Maya anyway for that.
I just have a few questions. According to his resume, though, his last job ended in 2008.
He's retired.
Yeah, but I mean, 14 years ago, which brings me to his certified licenses. Are they updated?
I will confirm with Nelson, I will confirm with Nelson that they are tomorrow.
Yeah, because I, if they're not.
Yeah, no, I will confirm that. I believe he has done interim work, though, so I will check. I will check with Nelson tomorrow and let you know if you want to do this pending that.
I would feel comfortable with that.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, somebody want to make that motion?
Sure, I will move to appoint Ron DeSantis as temporary building inspector, pending confirmation by the town administrator that his licenses are up to date.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
His email, original email does indicate that he's done it on interim basis for several towns, but I will confirm. So I'm presuming he kept his licenses, but we should. We should check, I don't want to know if he does, if he hasn't, I don't want to know what towns he's been doing it for.
Don't announce that, no, no.
Okay, so let's find that one out. Okay, consideration and possible action on a special one-day liquor license for Brimfield Winery for the Sturbridge bonfire, October 22nd, 5 to 9 p.m. Questions from the board? Motion?
They're required to have a detail officer?
Yes.
Despite it being a town?
Yep, per orders of the police chief.
Wouldn't they already be working that event for the town?
Not necessarily.
No? Okay, I just, I picked up on it, because it's quite a cost to absorb when you're doing such a small event. And I know they want to do it still, but it is a lot of, makes it cost prohibitive.
Well, they've had them before, so.
I know, I paid the bill.
Not glad you don't have to anymore. Okay, is there a motion from someone?
I'll make a motion to approve the license for Brimfield Winery for the Sturbridge bonfire located at the Sturbridge Common on October 22nd, 2022, from 5 to 9 p.m.
With stipulation of a detail officer.
Stipulation of a detail officer required and all staff be tip-certified.
And I also had a question that I should have brought up before the motion, but it doesn't really matter. It said alcohol will be consumed, it says, both on and off-premise.
I assume they're selling bottles, wanting to go, as usual.
Bottles.
Yeah, which mostly comes down to our lack of an open container law, too, that they could just sell it all to go, and then, it's like, it's a weird, it's a weird middle ground.
Yeah, we don't have open container law, which, we have debated.
They probably wouldn't need a detail officer if they were selling it to go, right?
Us in Vegas.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All in favor?
I think Chase seconded, right?
Yeah, I see, yeah.
Okay, next we have consideration and action on a special one-day liquor license for Greater Good Imperial Brewing for the Sturbridge bonfire, October 22nd, 4:45 to 9. They must be quicker at setup.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I mean, the only question I want to have is just follow up on Ian's point. Are they gonna split the detail officer, or are we gonna get, is it gonna be two separate?
Well, that's up to them to settle.
Okay, yeah, yeah, as long as there's one on the site, then, yeah, okay.
So that's the, and that's the police department requested that for the alcohol events.
Yep. Yep, so they can work that out.
Yeah, okay. All right, and I will make a motion for a special one-day liquor license for Greater Good Imperial Brewing for the Sturbridge bonfire located at the Sturbridge Common on October 22nd, 2022, from 4:45 to 9 p.m.
Second.
With detail officer.
With the detail officer, yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor? Consideration and possible action on proclamation to the Rotary Club of Stourbridge. Now, this is something we have been doing for, gosh, 20, 25 years?
Not longer.
Yeah. It reads, whereas the Rotary Clubs of Sturbridge, Massachusetts and Stourbridge, England have worked to promote a bond of friendship between the two clubs, and whereas the people of Sturbridge, Massachusetts and Stourbridge, England have taken part in cultural exchanges in an attempt to further that bond of friendship and understanding, and whereas the people of Sturbridge, Massachusetts are proud of the sister-city relationship which has developed and continues to grow between our towns, and whereas we welcome all opportunities to extend our gratitude to the people of Stourbridge, England. Now, therefore, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Sturbridge, Massachusetts wishes to extend special greetings and wishes for good health, peace, and prosperity to the people of Stourbridge, England. Sign the Board of Selectmen. Do we have a motion to sign?
So.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, the proclamation is here, so before you. Okay, the proclamation is here, so before you leave, because Klaus, Sturbridge Rotary would like it ASAP to send across the pond.
They want to send it with their, sorry about the Queen card.
I was actually thinking of a protocol, because I'm going to sit in on that meeting, and I think I should probably give condolences on the loss of the Royal Highness, because I was, I was actually thinking about, I was almost going to look up, I may look up with like the protocol.
Yeah, what to say, you know? True.
Little research on that.
Yeah. Actually, they were going to be here this year. However, there was death in one of the families, so they postponed, it's just going to be part of their trip, so...
That would have been...
Yeah, but it's back to remote. Okay, we voted, didn't we?
Yeah, thank you.
Good. Okay, consider, consideration and possible action on the new contracting fee for weights and measures service from the Commonwealth. This, I have a problem with.
Mm-hmm.
The state is requiring $13,000 something now. We have always, in the past, paid $5,000, and then a couple of years ago, went up to So it is quite a jump to $13,090.
Yeah.
Robin has some ideas on it.
What, can we vote not to pay it?
Yeah, no, so, we have fees, but our fees certainly don't, our fees cover $5,000, basically. Other communities are choosing to just contract their own person. It just has to be done, the state doesn't have to do it, we can do it locally. So we can contract, we can advertise to contract somewhat for someone. If we can't get someone who can do it, or we can even give a stipend to an employee who's qualified to do it, if I don't have anybody else from outside who can do it. If we don't get that, or any interest in that, we could go to the state, but really the only way to offset it is to raise the fees, and that's on your local businesses. I mean, those are all your local businesses that have the weights and measures, local gas stations, whatever it might be.
Grocery stores.
Grocery stores. So I'd like to, if we can, we have until the end of December, we can always at a December meeting, sign this contract and get up to the state. I'd like to see if maybe we can just advertise for somebody to do it on contract. They'll make the $5,000 or $5,300, or whatever it's going to be. But the fees bring, whatever they bring in, basically, we'll pay them. I mean, we're not going to make money on it, it's, if they do $8,000 worth of weights and measures, if the current fees, then they'll get $8,000, if that's what it adds up to. But we can keep our current fees, still make sure that we get the list of everything that has to be checked, and I just have to find out what the, you know, the actual operations are to get that. And then just do it ourselves internally, if you all would like me to go that direction, as opposed to just arbitrarily paying the Commonwealth, which right now is like awash with money.
I'd imagine that there's people out in the business world that know the state has doubled their fee, and they have to be making more services available at a reasonable rate to compete.
I would think so. I mean, this has got to be out there publicly, this has been going on since March, that they've, they've indicated, started to indicate to communities. We got our letter in, I don't remember when it was, August?
Look up the weights and measures class.
We got, we got a letter from them, I think it was, and it may have been, yeah, August, about it, and I think they probably had sent something before I came. So in August, we got a letter that I, that landed on mine, and I realized we hadn't dealt with it here, I had dealt with it in Stoughton, and in Stoughton, we were just going to hire someone to do it and offset the cost that way. It just didn't seem right to raise all the fees on the small businesses.
Right, I mean, it's quite, how's the board feel?
Yeah, I'll do the research and see if it's viable, and then as a last ditch, we can pay the state.
We can always do the state if we have to. I mean, it's not that we can't afford the $8,000, and we really shouldn't absorb it, it should get passed to the businesses, because it's a direct service, but I hate doing that if we don't have to. It needs to be more business unfriendly.
I think if we at least try, then...
Yeah, then give it a shot.
Then we can go back to them and say, look, we tried, this is the best option.
We just don't have anybody who can do it, right. So, thank you.
Okay, so we'll see how that goes.
No action needs to be taken on that, then, okay.
Okay, old business, Jamie?
None.
Chase?
I have no.
Ian? New business, Ian?
Nope.
Chase?
October 31st, I think is a Monday.
Yes.
We said on the memo earlier, it'll, trick-or-treatings on Sunday, October 31st, and I just know that's going to...
What memo?
Police chief earlier.
What's on the Facebook?
We said October 31st.
What's on the website?
Sunday night, though.
Hold on, let me just look at my...
Sunday's October 30th.
Let me look at my emails from the chief.
Technically speaking, this is a new business.
Yeah, no, but I just, I, that caught my ear after, and...
No, we said October 31st.
Yeah, but, but it said Sunday, October 31st.
Which some people are going to think we're doing a Sunday Halloween thing, and we're not, right.
Yeah.
Is that how it read?
Yeah.
I should have read mine instead of the chief's.
Halloween should be at Halloween, kind of like the Fourth of July is the Fourth of July, Independence Day is the Fourth of July.
You want candy, go out on a school night, that's it.
I know that's going to cause a lot of confusion to...
I believe it's, it is the 31st, I'm just trying to see if, yes.
All but one year it's been.
Yes, the rain, the monsoon year, yeah.
Trick or treat, okay. Hey, listen, this is news to me, that we had organized times for trick-or-treat in town.
Yeah, well, they like people to come for the...
I come from like communities where it's chaos, and you...
Oh, yeah.
Where I grew up, you could trick-or-treat whatever you wanted, wherever you wanted.
They have a nice parade down here, and costume judging, and hot chocolate.
Here's a trick-or-treat parade, email from the chief. Attached is the memo, hold on.
So that's the third.
This is the beauty of cell phones.
Good use, Chase. Should have just read mine instead of his.
Chase is just thinking about going out there, he wants to go, nobody being around.
Five to seven, I was going to say, my memo says Sunday, October 31st, yes, from the chief. So I would believe that is Monday, and we will make sure that wherever it is posted, it is accurate. Thank you.
Yeah. Then we'll start getting the calls about, why can't we change it to a Saturday or a Friday?
I'm cooking cookies, though, there's cookies.
Oh, yeah, they have good cookies.
Okay.
Okay, so that was new. Oh, was that a little new?
Yeah, a little bit of both.
It's sort of current, it's current events.
Jamie, new?
Nope.
And I have nothing. And we have no minutes. And we have no citizens. So is there a motion?
So moved, to adjourn.
You got to put the right words in.
They're all in there at some point.
Give a second?
Yes, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.